All the commissioners are present, I believe. I see Kathleen, I see Jeff Larson, Lori Blackwelder, Cindy Green, Gold, and our newest member, Jan Rutke. I'd like to begin by welcoming Jan to the commission. I know she's, I believe she's done this before along with lots of other commissions and councils here in Chesapeake Beach and brings a tremendous amount of experience that I think is going to help us out a lot. So Jan, thank you very much for volunteering. Do you want to say anything or introduce yourself to those that might not know you?
Well, just real quick, Larry, I want to thank you for the things that you sent me to read so that I could get up to speed. Chris Jakubiak also sent me a lot of things to help me get up to speed. I've read it all several times, whether I retained it or not, we'll see tonight. But I've been active in town because I love the town. We've lived here about 30 years. We've owned several businesses in town. My husband was active on town council committees, all kinds of things. We're just kind of, we like people, so we gravitate towards groups that interest us. So anyway, I'm delighted to be here.
Well, thank you very much for volunteering. I do want to also say, although I don't see Jonathan Evans on the, on the list, thank him for his service for the past eight or so months. So we appreciate everything he did while he was here. Um, let's see, now, tonight, the agenda is work session on the comprehensive plan. What I would like to do and with the commission's approval is begin by asking for commission comments. We can go around to each of you, see what's on your mind. I know Lori Blackwelder has asked for your initial comments on the housing section. I don't want to get bogged down in that because that's not the subject for tonight's meeting. Left to do on chapter five before the chapter six. So if you want to comment on that as they go around your top level, I think as Lori said, observations on the housing chapter. You can go ahead. While you're thinking about that, me, go through a couple of things on my mind. I'll start out with commissioner comments. Where we are at for those of the public that are online with us, the commission has added one extra meeting every month for this month and the next two months. That's April, May, and June. We have a lot of work to do to complete the comprehensive plan and we needed to add some meetings so that we would have time to work on it. Since the last meeting, we received chapter six of the comprehensive plan. Now, that's six of 10 chapters. We still have four chapters, draft chapters that we have not seen yet. So gives you some idea of how much is left to do. Also, I would point out that Commissioner Blackwelder sent out a, an attachment to an email of models and guidelines for the housing element provided by Maryland Department of Planning. You might want to take a look at that if you haven't got it. Let me or Commissioner Blackwelder know and we'll make sure you get a copy or the link to that, that document. Let me point out also, a lot has happened at the town council level. In March, the town council adopted the finalized master walkability plan. I was asked at the last town council meeting what we're going to do with it. In my quick review of it, there's a lot there that could be incorporated either in implementation or other areas of the comprehensive plan. And so we'll need to look at that and see where we can capture that because it is a big document. Fortunately, we have two members of the walkability committee on the commission now that will help us focus on the top level things. In April, the town council also endorsed the flood and sea level rise action plan framework. That's something we'll want to look at since the town council endorsed it to make sure that what we're writing is consistent with that flood and sea level rise framework. Town council also adopted or approved ordinance 21-1 prohibiting full casino licenses or sports betting licenses in Chesapeake Beach. It's understood that this is really controlled by the state. If the, the state can possibly override us, but based on the election last year where the town was asked for their opinion and the strong support against casino gambling, the town council passed this ordinance. And I was asked at the town council meeting if we would take a look at that and incorporate it into the comprehensive plan and also look at potential other ordinances that might be drafted to beef that up and do the people's business, if you will, since that's what the public wanted. And finally, on my list, the town economic development committee told me at the last town council meeting that they intend to provide a report to the planning commission for inclusion in the comprehensive plan. I don't know when that will be, hopefully soon. So we'll have a chance to look at it and see where it can be incorporated. But if nothing else, we can add it later as an appendix to the, to the comprehensive plan. And that's as a minimum, that's where I think the walkability plan would go as, as an appendix. Um, also, other things that have happened actually just today. Holly, can you, um, let me share screens here?
Yes, you should be able to share your screen.
All right, so if I go like this.
Let me, let me stop sharing, one second, sorry.
So. All right. Our town administrator, Holly, has added to the town website this, this new, new feature to the planning and zoning page. As you see, I'm on, on the town website, planning and zoning. If you go down here to comprehensive plan update.
Larry, I'm sorry, we can't see it.
You can't see it?
No, sir.
Okay.
I see your handsome face, but that's it.
Hmm, well, I can get rid of my head if that will help.
Oh, no, I'm messing up my screen. I'm trying to.
Oh, we aren't, we aren't sharing, huh?
No.
Not yet.
Well, I'll just describe it to you then.
Chairman, if you, if you'd like, I could share my screen and just show that page quickly.
Yeah, if you would.
Okay. So this page is linked from the town website on the planning and zoning page. It's Plan Chesapeake Beach MD.gov. And we've just linked the comp plan draft. So if you select this button here, it'll take the public to the drafts as they currently stand for the plan.
Cool. Okay, so as you see that, you see that there are two chapters on the, on there now. We will get all the draft chapters up there for both the commission and the public to see. And as soon as, as soon as we get organized here, this is fresh stuff. It's brand new. And so we'll, we'll get it updated. But that's where you can go now to find the latest chapters as they get updated. I am not getting my screen back here. So I'm going to check off and check back on to Zoom.
Uh, my screen also disappeared, so I'm going to have to do the same.
We can see you though.
You can?
Yes.
So my post attendee Zoom.
Yeah, I can see you, Lori.
Great, so I just, I don't know.
Lori, hi, this is Holly. If you, if you see on the bottom of your dashboard, a little blue camera icon, typically if you, if you hit that icon, it should bring you back to the meeting.
You are right, thank you.
What is the picture of the telephone we keep seeing, Holly? A, a green telephone symbol pops up, what's that?
Oh, is that when I'm speaking possibly?
Yeah, that's somebody on the telephone.
Oh, I see, okay.
Okay, so you saw that feature, I think that's very nice. I think it'll be helpful to us, certainly to the public because they'll get to see what we're working on. At our last meeting, in our minutes, it says Chris is going to provide us with a table of contents of the remaining chapters and details on issues that put before the commission. And so I'm looking forward to that document and we'll get that out as soon as I receive it. Now, the process moving forward, I hope all of you have had a chance to look at what I put together with as the chairman's list of items. And that's my plan. If the commission says it's okay to proceed that way, I, I asked for and I've gotten feedback from about half of the commission on open issues. And I've tried to make them succinct and decidable. So there are, I think, 33, 34 of them on the list. And that's from chapter five, that is. And I'd like to walk down that list and try and check off some of those items and move forward with chapter five. So that's my proposal. Let me walk around the commission. You can each make your comments. And if you want to, if you have another idea on how we should proceed forward, I'm happy to hear. And also, you want to make some top level comments on the housing chapter. Lori would appreciate that. So let's start with Vice Chairman Blackwelder.
Oh, my comments first? Um, okay, so I just wanted to touch base on the housing chapter because now that we've received a housing chapter right before discussing land use, it's, it's tempting to be hyper-focused on housing when really the comprehensive plan is comprehensive about every subject. So after viewing the housing chapter, there's a couple of things that I do want to point out. First of all, unfortunately, my first one is, is a critique, but I would like to remind everybody that there's a, there's a sentence in the housing chapter that says that decisions made to mitigate adverse impacts of development would be made at the expense of others. And I just want to remind everybody that our decisions to mitigate adverse impacts of land use are not at the expense of others. We have a right to mitigate adverse impacts of land use. So, you know, we can discuss that when we go over the housing chapter, but I don't, I, I don't want people to go down the road of thinking that way, that we need to make these sacrifices except adverse impacts of land development.
Right.
In order to mitigate expenses to other people, that's just not true. There's lots of areas in our AMI that can accept affordable housing. And from what I understand, and Chris included in his report, our metrics on workforce and affordable housing are better than average in our state and our region. Our area currently serves as an affordable option in our designated AMI, which is the Washington Arlington Alexandria Metropolitan Reason, Region. And like I said, there are many areas within this region that are better served by roads. They're more convenient to jobs that could lift people out of dependency cycles and that are not in areas burdened with concerns about, concerns about sea level rise. So I guess the urgency for us to, you know, supply an, an amount of affordable housing that will cause adverse impacts to us as residents is misguided. And we need to remember that there's a substantial amount of affordable housing in North Beach and Summer City, which are located within a few miles of our border. And by Maryland standards, those are areas that we can use to explain our housing plan. There's also, the chapter fails to mention the investment in affordable and workforce housing that has been made in nearby Prince Frederick. And this is despite the fact that our schools are already at capacity. That is also commutable to Chesapeake Beach. Another observation, I'm finding the suggestion that we convert all of our single-family housing to multiple-family housing to be a kind of strange. I don't know of many areas that do this unless they're very near or in a city. And we are in a, a remote beach town that serves as, as a tourist destination. So this doesn't make sense to me, especially in certain particular areas that are already overcrowded. Basically, we've done an outstanding job over the past two decades by developing housing that accommodates a variety of income levels. And as indicated by our current metrics, which exceed those of our region and our state. And so our residents indicated that they would prefer slower residential growth and that we focus on family-friendly economic development and recreation. And I hope that we can put all topics related to land use in the proper perspective while we're having this discussion tonight.
Okay, uh, let's move on to Commissioner Greengold.
Um, I, first of all, I was wondering if, if Chris was going to give us a staff report on housing or not. Chris, will you be giving us a staff report on this?
When we start the housing chapter, we'll get a report from Chris on the housing chapter. But we've got to move on to, we've got to finish up something. We've got to finish chapter five, you know? So.
Well, I guess my, my concern is, do I want to start talking about the housing chapter? Or do we just go back to land use? What would you like my comments on?
Land use, because land use is the subject of tonight's meeting.
Okay, so, so not, we're not going to discuss housing then. I'm confused about that. Okay, land use, I have a lot of, lot of concerns about. And maybe some of the issues from housing is part of land use, but, um.
And you, can you tell me, first of all, are these concerns you're going to talk about not on the list that you gave me of your concerns?
Uh, I don't think I gave you a list of my concerns, frankly. Did I give you a list? I don't think I gave you, did I give you a list? I'm not even sure.
All right, so you haven't given me a list of these things, these are all new.
They possibly might be, but the, the most important thing I think that I want to deal with with land use is the, the housing, the building height. And I think we've talked about this and I wanted to go over that.
The first thing on my agenda tonight, if we can get to it.
Okay, so do you want me to hold on that part of it then?
Yeah, you'll have an opportunity to talk about that when we, we're going to go right down my list that I've provided.
Okay, well, maybe I should hold back and just wait until we get to your list. Maybe we should do it that way.
Well, that's what I'm asking, if that's okay with the commission. Otherwise, somebody else come up with another plan, but that's my, my end result.
I like your plan.
These issues. Okay, anything else?
No, I think I'm going to hold back until we get into the structure of your meeting. Might be easier that way.
Okay, and Commissioner Larson?
No, I'm good with your list.
Okay.
Just get it.
All right, and Commissioner Burrell?
That's, that's fine, let's, let's go do your list and let's check something off the list.
All right, and finally, Commissioner Rutke, any more comments you would like to make before we start with tonight's agenda?
Oh, are you saying to me, Larry?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Rutke, I said, Commissioner Rutke.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think your list is very detailed and it's well organized and I think we should rock and roll with that.
All right, thank you. I've, just background on the list again, started out with an email from Chris where he had several, a, a list of multi-topics and I broke them out into regions to try and make them more digestible. And then I asked for commission, commissioner input and I've got a number of inputs from commissioners which have been, I believe, added to the list. At least I tried. And, and so I would say we've, we go through. I'll, I'll start with what the question is. And if there, and we'll do this, well, if there's a second, if there's someone else that thinks that's an important issue, second it, then we can have a discussion. I'd like to have some resolution of that issue and then move to the next one. So let me, let me begin here. First of all, the first one on my list is whether to place a height limit on all new buildings or renovations within all zoning districts to 35 feet. This was a proposal made by Commissioner Greengold back in October. Chris Jakubiak wrote up a zoning ordinance. We were going to vote on it in December, then we deferred it in January. And so it's at the top of the list of things for the land use section. So that's the first, the first question, do we want to discuss that or check it off the list? Do we have a second?
A second, please.
All right, um, let me begin the discussion because I'll be probably the outlier here. It seems to me that a one-size-fits-all 35-foot height limit is too restrictive. It's simple to, to execute, but I think if you look at the various regions of Chesapeake Beach, they aren't all the same. And so on the western side of Chesapeake Beach, you can, you can build a basement. You can add to your home by having a basement. You can build a ground-level floor that is usable and effectively immune from flooding and, and weather and sea level rise. Whereas you have a number of homes along the coast that do not enjoy those opportunities. They can't do a basement because the water table is directly beneath them. They, they're really chancing it if they put a ground-level floor on a new renovation. A house four doors down from me during Isabel had three feet of water on the, the ground floor. So it, it seems to me that a, a one-size-fits-all is, is not the best thing. I would say we could, I would suggest that we could make it a standard that the appeals board could take into consideration if someone wants to exceed that standard. We already have some of that in the, in the town ordinances, like a church steeple or a, some, something on the roof that's attractive to the neighbors, like a cupola or something along that line. So there, today, there are exceptions that the Board of Appeals can consider if they want to allow it. But I would think that anything beyond a general guide would be too harsh. So those are my comments. Commissioner Greengold, you want to take over from there?
Um, I, I just wrote up something that I'd like to read if I could. I just want to make it simple for everybody. Last November, there was an overwhelming support for the town council candidates who promoted a small-town feel. Over 70% of the residents agreed they wanted council members that supported a less intense, smaller profile and more open environment. The one way a town retains that feel is by keeping the size of the structures and buildings in proportion to the existing infrastructure so that when they walk on the sidewalk or they drive in a car, they don't feel overwhelmed by the size of the adjacent structures. They want to feel the openness of the sky. They want to see the birds and the hawks and the, and the eagles flying overhead and they want to enjoy the blowing breezes. They want cottage-like housing and friendly neighbors. They want to peek at the bay and the enjoyment of watching the boats in the water. And that's why we all moved here. We all moved here to be able to have a sense of environment and, and enjoy the bay that we moved here for. To allow zoning that would encourage the development of vertical units where garages are the first floor and 35 feet of living spaces above would undermine the small-town feel. The height of those townhomes or multiplexes or apartments or houses or, and, and commercial buildings are upwards of 45 feet or more. They're built, if they're built on a berm, they could be as high as 60 feet above the small roads beneath them or beside them. You know, I just went to New Jersey and that's exactly what happened up there. After their hurricane, they came through, leveled everything and they built these berms so that now with the height limit, they're building, you know, these monstrosities because they're now on a, on a, on a mound of dirt that allows them to go up even, and even 20, 20 more feet for better views, for crying out loud. But in, in, in that coastal town, no one would ever have this sense that they were in a small town. It, it just took the whole small, small-town charm away when they did, did that. And in many areas of, of the country and Maryland, these units already proliferate. And I have a sense that people that live there only consider it for a short time because it's not a very lovely or charming place to, to be in. So they're probably only using these kind of, kind of places for stepping stone housing. They provide more square footage and a smaller footprint, of course, and allow for more residents per unit. And more residents tend to require more parking, more traffic, more trash, more utilization of our infrastructure, et cetera. And the question is, is that what we all want? I tend to think that with the vote of over 70% of people wanting a small-town feel, that isn't what we all wanted. And if we all want to turn our small beach town into a town of Legoland structures with trapping cars, et cetera, and barking dogs without any yard to them, then we keep that hot, we go up into that height limit and allow for whatever variances you want to go to. But I, I for one, and I've seen it in other towns, feel that we need to keep a 35-foot height limit. They do it in other towns. So you know, if you do your research, you'll see that St. Michael's right across the bay, they've done this. Olympia, Washington has done this. Laguna Beach, many towns in the San Diego area, in LA area, they've all done this where they, they've made the error of not restricting the height. People, developers, there's a lot of foreign money coming in, buying up beach property all up and down the coast, on the east and west coast. They're trying to get as much benefit out of bang for their buck, you might say. So they're trying to get as high as they can. And if we don't have the courage as a group to say enough is enough, keep the intensity down, keep the small-town feel, then we're going to lose it forever. And this is our one chance as a group to say enough is enough. If St. Michael's can do it, we can do it. And, you know. And, you know, uh, it doesn't affect the economy, it doesn't affect, all it does is provide, enhance the quality of our life. It keeps the intensity down. It, it provides all of us with the things that we wanted when we moved here originally, which is ocean, uh, bay breezes, a little peek of view, uh, peek of, uh, boo view when we, when we walk by, and, and to see some of the, uh, the ecology and some of the plant life and some of the, the bird life. That's what we wanted when we moved in here. So, as far as I'm concerned, the thirty-five-foot height limit at ground level, at the original ground level, is an important, uh, zoning idea that we should incorporate into this plan. And I would like to make a motion. Can I entertain a motion, Larry? Would you mind if I entertain a motion?
How about we walk around, let everybody comment, then we'll come back to you.
That's fine, go ahead.
All right, so, uh, Commissioner Ruckey, can I call on you?
Yes, you absolutely may. I am a hundred percent in agreement, uh, with Carol, right?
Cindy, actually, Cindy.
Cindy, I'm sorry.
I look like Carol, I do look like Carol.
Her close friends call her Carol.
That's right, exactly. You may call me Carol.
You, you make a good Carol.
I do, I actually, you know what, now that you mention it, I think I'll change my name, I'll change my name.
Anyway, I agree a hundred percent with you in terms of what I believe, well, I, for myself, but for the, for the townspeople as to what they're looking for in their town. And it's not to have it changed beyond anything they recognize. It's not to have so many additional people that they can't move around. It's not, uh, a six-story building next to Fishing Creek would deny many people the view of that gorgeous creek and boardwalk. It's, it's just not the quality of life that we'll end up with, and I think it should stay at thirty-five feet. If somebody really has heartburn about it, they could go to the Board of Appeals. I mean, it's not like they don't, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not like they don't have the opportunity to try to put their point out there, and, and maybe there's some circumstance we haven't thought about. But, uh, I, I vote to keep it exactly the way it is, thirty-five feet.
Okay, Commissioner Larson?
Well, I would agree with that, too. I think that, that, you know, when we're talking about the quality of life here in Chesapeake Beach in the small-town feel, a lot of that is subjective, and here's an objective way to try and maintain that. And, um, so I, I agree. I mean, one of the most shocking things to me when we moved, after we moved here was the enormous high-rise apartment building down at the end of the street. It just sticks out, it's so contrary to the rest of the way the town feels. You, you just don't want that to hap, I don't want that to happen again.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Burrell?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, yes, I, I am in, also in support of the thirty-five-feet restriction. I think that if, if nothing, uh, I've learned over the past three months, at least when we've had a really robust call-in, is that the theme seems to be, well, if they're, you know, in discussion of the moratorium, if there are multifamily, if there are buildings currently in the town that are above thirty-five feet, why can't we have, uh, new buildings above thirty-five feet? And I think what's gonna happen is the whole landscape, I think it's a progression, and the landscape is gonna continue to raise and raise and raise. And, I mean, we don't have any better example than what happens when a building's too tall. I mean, the parking garage has forever changed the complexion and the landscape of Chesapeake Beach. And now, i- it's, it's just hard to enter the town without seeing it, um, front and center, and, and now everybody's looking around it, and I believe that, um, you know, as I said, that it's going to continue, people are gonna want to have, if, you know, just in, uh, along B Street alone, you know, the two newest buildings are not harmonious with the other cottage structures that were originally here. And every time somebody new comes in, they want to go taller and higher and wider, and, and it is. It, you know, it's, we're now all gonna be stepping on top of each other. And I, uh, I think Dan made a very valid point, as I think also you did, Chairman, that if somebody's unhappy, they can go to the Board of Appeals and then they'll be looked at on a case-by-case basis. But I think the thirty-five-foot restriction, um, is good and I support it. Thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner Blackwelder?
I'm also in agreement. I would say that the options for the Board of Appeals should be limited to single-family residents and not be opened up to multifamily structures. But yes, I would support the thirty-five-foot limit. I'm not necessarily a height person, I'm a youth person, but it effectively controls impact and, and crowding, so yes, I'm totally in support.
Okay, and Commissioner Green Gold, I think I've hit everybody. Commissioner Green Gold, if you want to make your motion?
I would move to amend the height limits to thirty-five feet from original grade level for any building in all zones of Chesapeake Beach. An additional five feet may be added if applicant can demonstrate the additional height is needed to comply with the Town of Chesapeake Beach's floodplain management regulations.
Okay, uh, and, um, I'll ask you to send that to Sharon afterwards so she can make sure she has it word for word. Do you mind if I ask you to read it one more time?
I move to amend the height limits to thirty-five feet from original grade level for any building in all zones of Chesapeake Beach. An additional five feet may be added if applicant can demonstrate the additional height is needed to comply with the Town of Chesapeake Beach's floodplain management regulations.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, who was that?
Kathleen, I'm happy to second.
Okay, so, uh, was that Jan or Kathleen that seconded?
Well, we, we both did, but she was first.
Okay.
She's quicker than I am.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, uh, the motion passes. Okay.
Hallelujah.
All right, next item. On my list is whether to recommend design standards be developed and adopted, develop design standards for each district in order to ensure that development and redevelopment is harmonious and with existing structures and that a strong sense of place emerges or is retained within each district as development and redevelopment takes place. So, is there a second to?
I second.
Okay, we have a second, I think that was Lori?
No, it's Cindy. It was Carol.
It was Carol Brady.
Yeah, there you go.
I guess I'll never live that down, will I?
No, you won't, Jan. I'll come over tomorrow and I'll say, Jan, it's Carol.
I know, we're gonna change Dan's name to Joe, but, okay, here we go.
Now, do you know, most people, if they can't remember my name, always call me Pat. Uh-oh. Always.
Okay, that is funny.
And Lori, if I could ask you to lead off in the discussion?
Uh, okay, well, design standards is something that our neighbor, North Beach, has, and many towns have, especially if they are, um, you know, tourists in nature. It's just, um, somebody will come in and develop a guide that helps us with developing placemaking, which I think would be really good for our town. There's no immediate, um, I guess, effect in recommending this in the comprehensive plan other than it's something to consider and that, uh, fund is supported and when supported. So I, I think it'd be really good for our town.
Okay, um, Cindy, Green Gold, if you want?
Uh, I am definitely for this. I'm from a, a town where we, uh, the entire town is recognized with a, uh, theme or branding, you might say. And it's a very important thing that a town do this, to be recognized, a, a separate entity from like North Beach, whatever. But, so I'm very eager to support any idea where we can bring in consultants that could help guide us into, um, this, uh, theme that you might say that would continue out through all the signage, uh, the architectural details and everything else that would go along with that. So I'm in total agreement with that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ruckey?
I agree wholeheartedly, but I do have one question. In the paragraph where you were talking about building height, there was another notation that apartments not be allowed above commercial buildings. Is that gonna be addressed at some later time, or?
Uh, if it's on my list, we'll be getting to it.
Okay, all right. Anyway, I'm in favor of, of a sense of place. My husband's an interior designer, he has, uh, beaten into me the idea that, you know, there are certain elements in building that can be the same without everything looking cookie-cutter, things that just pull it together, and I think it's a terrific idea.
Okay, and Commissioner Burrell?
Amen, I'm totally in agreement, and I know I've said it many times, um, just along here in B Street, up on the hill, that, uh, you know, it really would help if that the design, you know, were more harmonious and there could be, you know, several options, you know, just like in Beach Elementary when they just gave, you know, they specifically looked at, you know, structure and the color palette, and I just think it, um, it will allow consistency, but not necessarily homogenization, but I think it, it will, um, be a lot more, um, I guess, envi- environmentally, as well as aesthetically, uh, thematic, and it will show a consistency in the neighborhood. So, I'm for it.
Okay, and Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, I'm for it. I know that, for a while, Carrie and I lived in New Market, Maryland, if you knew where New Market is, and, uh, every house in New Market, Maryland is on the National Historic Registry. And that's the opposite side of the spectrum where the restrictions are so pro-givative, I couldn't even put up a picket fence unless the pickets were shaped exactly historically accurate. So I would hate to see things go to that limit, but I think that there should be some sta, some aesthetic that perpetuates itself through the whole town. Otherwise, things just stand out like a sword thump. And, you know, I'm all for individuality, but, you know, not at the risk of, eyesores. I'm for it.
Okay, um, well, I would say then that we'll, uh, there is no one opposed to that. We can move on to the next item. Unfortunately, I had, I had redone the item, so I had them numbered, and if I could share my screen, you could see them and you could read them as we go along. I'm sorry, that hasn't worked out, but, uh, I'll read the next one. The next one is, we're talking about along Route 260 and Route 261, the gateway, that intersection, that area around the intersection. Whether to allow apartments above new commercial development on Maryland 260 as part of the redevelopment revitalization of the commercial gateway mixed-use area. So, I know, uh, Commissioner Blackwelder has some strong feelings about that, if you'd like to lead off.
So you might be surprised, I have, um, I have strong feelings of, um, ensuring that the ground floor of that is commercial use as a prerequisite to developing up. And since we have in, implemented the height standard, it's, it's not as, um, it's not gonna be as detrimental to have something above because there's gonna be a limit to the capacity there. So I'm, I'm actually for the commercial below an apartment in that area, if that's what happens. I, I think it could also be cottagerial. So I, I could support whichever viewpoint on that, as long as the height limit still stays thirty-five feet. But I would say that we, the, the prerequisite, if we do do that, is that there has to be commercial underneath, and that's the only, get the multi-unit structure above.
It has to be, you said it has to be a multi-unit? I wanted.
Well, I'm, or, or the, or the residential above, um, I, I'm trying to, this is where design standards come in. And, and why I think it might be better to initially go with just an either-or, keep everything a cottage, but allow residential or commercial in that area until we can get our act together and, and figure out how we want that area to emerge, but I, I, I'm, I would rather listen to everybody else on this.
Okay.
Particular what?
All right, Green Gold?
Larry, I'm so sorry, what area are we talking about again?
We're talking about the intersection where the stoplight is at, uh, 261 and 260, they, which, uh, Chris is calling the gateway.
Well, I think what you're, you're really talking about the-
Buildings along Route 260, to allow, uh, let me read it again, whether to allow apartments above new commercial development on Maryland 260 as part of the redevelopment revitalization of the commercial gateway mixed-use area.
I think my concern about it is, number one, parking, and number two, setbacks. When you get into problems is when you put a, uh, even mixed-use or thirty, even thirty-five feet up close to the sidewalk, like some of those cottages, if you just took the, 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 the exact location where those cottages are and you went up another twenty-five, let's just say another twenty-five or twenty feet, that could be overwhelming. I think we need to have a setback if we're going to allow that, uh, intensity right there. So I think that would be something I would be talking about as a setback. If it's commercial, if there's commercial in there, and also, uh, parking. Uh, I don't see any reason why we can't have commercial along there, it makes sense to have commercial, but I'm just concerned that we're gonna have a lot of slowing down of traffic, no place for these cars to go because you can't park really out in the front of the- I had one lady park to deliver flowers out there on 260 one day, and she stopped traffic all the way back up to, you know, Cox Road. So, I mean, we gotta be careful about this particular area. It makes sense to have some commercial there and to possibly have mixed-use there as well. But again, do we have the room? We need to have a certain lot size, we need to have parking available, we need to have a set, a proper setback. That was, that's my, that's my comment.
Setback, can you describe that?
In other words, right now, some of those cottages only have, uh, Chris, what would you say their setbacks are, maybe twenty feet setback? I don't know, what do you say some of those cottages are right there?
You mean setback from Maryland 260?
From the 260, exactly.
Some of these businesses are set back fifteen feet from the right-of-way. These are very close to the right-of-way, actually.
They're very close, and so when you have that and you go up to thirty-five feet, it's actually taller than you think. So I'm a little concerned about that mixed-use thirty-five feet, believe it or not, that high of a, of a, of a setting. Now, now if you look over there, the chicken place is obviously thirty-five feet, uh, and that's close to the highway. But if you had that all up and down the street and you had it all, um, like, the thirty-five feet probably includes that cobula on the top or that little area on the top, what do you think, Chris? Probably does include that top, uh, that top section.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe thirty-five feet.
So if you had a building that was a perfect Legoland rectangular vertical building up against the road, uh, like, uh, you know, rectangular building like commercial people like to do, I think we would find that very, um, unbecoming and it wouldn't be a very attractive, uh, setting for that particular entryway. Do I think we could do it? Yes, but we have to, again, set back maybe twenty-five to thirty feet and possibly have, as Lori said, do, design elements that would make, make each level maybe, uh, maybe in a little bit so that you didn't have it all one big rectangular box. all one big rectangular box, right up against the road. Because if you came down 260 and saw a bunch of rectangular boxes, like a Legoland, a mini Legoland, I think we would find that very unattractive, and again, too much traffic, too much intensity. And once you get one commercial building in there, you probably are going to, you know, see a repeat of that all the way up and down the road. Do I think it should be commercial? Yeah, I do think if we're going to have commercial, that could be it. But we've got to think about parking and everything else I just mentioned.
Yeah, I, Cindy, you articulated what I was trying to say. We're just not ready or prepared with the right code to allow this right now.
All right, all right. Let's, let's move through the commissioners, then we'll decide whether we're gonna, what we're gonna do. Commissioner Rutke.
I have a, I've, I've always had a particular interest in 260, coming into town. It absolutely is the gateway for our town. And I, I think it's so underserved visually and economically. And it, it definitely needs a redo. Now, the walkability plan that we finished up envisioned on 260, a place to sit, the properties, the new properties would be set back enough so that people could sit like in a cafe setting. There'd be a place for pedestrians to walk, and there'd be a place for bicycles to bicycle. So we certainly could have design standards for that area. But when you're inviting a commercial entity to come into our town, allowing apartments above it gives them, especially in our town where we need it, gives us the oppor, gives them the opportunity to have cash flow. You know, we're, we're inviting people in, hopefully, and it's going to be new businesses to us. And they know we're in, you know, an old, old little town here. And I think they, I think the people coming in need to know we have standards, setbacks and all that stuff. But I think they absolutely need the opportunity to have cash flow for their new business. I think that would make it immensely attractive, and we would get people perhaps we would not otherwise get.
And, and that can be done within the 35-foot height limit, you think?
They do it in Laguna Beach all the time. It's all.
I'm just talking about setbacks.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, not, not the height. I have no problem with 35 feet. I'm just talking about having a sufficient setback that these Lego-like structures, as Carol said.
As Carol said, yeah.
Yeah. You know, it wouldn't be overwhelming. It wouldn't be daunting. And you could make them look, you know, more attractive than a Lego.
So, okay. And Commissioner Boral.
Well, I think the gateway is, is critical in the fact that this is really the entrance into the town. And I think it sets the whole tone of the town, the flavor, the charm, if you will. And I, I think, you know, there's a, a natural decompression, I think, that takes place as you come down 260, and you see the, you know, Veterans Park, and the flag, and the water. And I guess, I like the fact that there's the 35-feet restriction on the buildings. But I'm, I'm a little cautious about, I like the residences along the, along 260. And I do think the, the setback is important, because, you know, not only for appearance, aesthetic, but I also think as far as cars egressing onto the roadway, I think it's better to have the setback. So I guess, I'm in support of it in a limited capacity, I guess. I, I wouldn't like to see a lot of businesses, because I think along that gateway, because I think that is, I think that it's nice that it's open and there are residences, because I think it's, that's the flavor that this is a beach town.
Okay, and Commissioner Larson.
Yeah, I, beyond the logistics and setbacks and, and the aesthetics of it, I like the idea of allowing residences over commercial entities, because I think it kind of humanizes it a little bit. Makes, the suburb that I grew up in outside of Philadelphia had a lot of streets like that, people living over their own businesses in a lot of cases. And I, I think it, I, I think it'd be nice. I think it would be quaint, add to the quaintness of the town.
Okay, so everybody had their say. Let me read it again. Whether to allow apartments above new commercial development on Maryland 260 as part of the redevelopment revitalization of that commercial gateway mixed use area. Is there anyone opposed?
Chairman Brown, can I make an amendment? It's just three words.
Go, let me hear what you want.
It's whether to allow apartments above new commercial development in a bonus overlay on Maryland 260 as part of redevelopment revitalization of that commercial gateway mixed use area. So I don't want to permit it outright, in case we don't get to the, the code qualifications. I'd like it to be safely in an overlay.
All right, Chris, you, would you comment on, on that affects things?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. So at this point, we're writing the comprehensive plan, and just stating a general policy that you would allow this type of development, again, provided the other things were taken care of, like building height, which is another policy, and design standards. I was actually thinking that the commission wanted to eliminate this notion of bonus density and over height, over overlays. And remember when I wrote the building height limitation ordinance for you, we eliminated all reference to bonus overlays. You get what you get. And there's no, you know, decision making that allows you to go up higher, or to change the use, or add it more intensity. I, I think that if the town, first of all, this doesn't start happening until you actually write a zoning code to make it happen, and when, or the town council adopts it. And at that time, then they adopt the design standards at the same time. Certainly, that's what's, what would happen in practice. So I, I think you're okay. I think all your objectives are met by, by having the, the standard, this policy adopted the way it's written. If, if you do the bonus density, I, it just opens up a real possibility that it abused counter to your, your goals, I think.
So, um.
Remember.
How do we, yeah, of when the comprehensive plan is adapted, and when we don't have, you know, we don't have the design standards yet, or we don't have, how do, how do we cover that gap?
Well, right now, remember, right now, these properties are their own commercial. Right now, these properties could be removed, and townhouses could be built there today. And right now, you could put an apartment, a building, apartment above any one of these businesses. That's allowed now on the current code. So what you're saying is basically allowing a mix of uses in a, in a building vertically stacked is okay, but we're going to cap it at 35 feet, not at 50 feet now. We're bringing it down to 35 feet. And, and, and we're going to adopt design standards that will guide how this area redevelops. So none of it happens, Lori, until zoning ordinance is amended. So if you adopt the comprehensive plan, it's, you're just basically saying, this is our mixed use area. This is what we kind of want. Later on, you're right, the design standards to bring out about all the issues that you've, you've described, the setbacks, the design standards, and, and whether it's, you know, only when you have commercial on the ground floor can you have apartment, you know, all those things will be written into the code. This just basically states the policy that, yeah, when we look at our land use plan, we see this possibility of having mixed uses here.
Does anyone else have questions of Chris about this proposal?
No.
Okay, hearing none. Let's, let's vote first on Lori's proposal. You still have that proposal, right, Lori?
The proposal, my proposal was different.
Your proposal is to add the bonus overlay language into it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know. Lori, or somebody, if you could explain to me what, what it is that we would get out of doing that. What is the benefit to the town to have that overlay as opposed to just waiting for the, the code to be written?
So, it, my, my concern is that this is going to develop in a haphazard manner. So my original thought was that we would keep it as a cottage area and allow either or commercial or residential. And that would prevent a bunch of weird structures being built. And, you know, when I first went in this commission, we were talking about really high buildings. So I'm very grateful that we're only talking about 35 feet at this point. I think that if you put something in a bonus, it's not a bonus density overlay, it's, it's kind of a bonus, I don't know what you would call it.
We have to define what it is if we're going to vote on it. We need to know what.
So, Chris, what was, what do you think?
If you like. I mean, I, I don't necessarily think it's neat, but I can explain how it will work. You would adopt a zoning ordinance, and you would draw a boundary around this specific area and say, in order to obtain the benefit of mixed use, you'd have to meet certain conditions. And, and I, and I would contend that that's a legitimate way of implementing mixed use. But you'll deal with that at the time that you write the code. You might find that just the right thing to do, but you might find, actually, once you get input from the business owners, that, that just adds a layer of complexity that interferes with their, you know, investment objectives, and just can't be achieved. And you can achieve the same thing without that extra layer of regulation. But, but I guess what I'm suggesting is that might be something you, you deal with later. The important thing as a matter of policy in the plan, which is, again, a general guide, is to say, we accept the notion of having mixed use here. We think it's important to revitalizing this particular gateway into town. But if you wanted to do the, the overlay, it's basically a designation that would be applied to the zoning map that would allow certain benefits if certain conditions were met.
So let's add in certain conditions. That way, we know it's a conditional approval and not an outright approval. So whether to allow apartments above new commercial development under certain conditions on Maryland 260 as part of the redevelopment revitalization of the commercial gateway mixed use area.
So you're suggesting a change in the wording that, under certain conditions instead of bonus overlay?
Yes.
I have a que, Larry?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we now know that a town home could be built on these properties in lieu of the mixed use commercial slash residential.
Yeah, as far as I can tell, and Chris, you correct me if I'm wrong, all of this, what we're proposing can be done right now. There's nothing restricting a developer from coming in and doing what we have proposed with commercial, with apartments above the commercial along Maryland Route 260.
I mean, my, my point, my point is, I would rather see, if you're going to redevelop it, I'd rather see the commercial, the mixed use than, than a straight town home. So if you're going to have, you know, a commer, a commercial entry, you might say, or some type of an entrance that would provide the town some economic benefit, I would rather see a mixed use scenario than just a total town home scenario. I don't know if there's a way to do one over the other, Chris, if that bonus overlay would, you know, provide for that situation. But I don't think that's an appropriate place for town homes myself. So I, you know, if we've got a choice, I'd rather go with the commercial.
The way the plan is drafted, and this draft, chapter five, is saying, this is a mixed use area. You have to lead with commercial. You can only put residential above. So it changes what's allowed now. And I think that's a huge step forward in, in the direction that you've wanted all along. I do think, you know, stating certain conditions as a policy, well, we should have to say what the conditions are. And I think the conditions are proper design, the adoption of design standards and the like. And I, I would think that you would write those right into the comprehensive plan, say, we need to do design standards. And, but once you adopt the design standards, I don't see why you would apply another regulatory approval on top of.
Right.
What you want to occur. I mean, you want to facilitate this, not, not, not complicate things. Just my experience, I, you want to make this walkable and encourage people to redevelop, once you have the standards in place.
Um, Chris?
Yes?
This is Kathleen. Can I just ask a question here? My understanding of the mixed use is that it's neighborhood, town, and maritime. Now, it, does that, it also must include that we would have the commercial, the ability to have the apartment above it? Is that something, is that a different definition of the mixed use, or have I misunderstood this?
No, that sounds right. The, the mixed uses for this particular area is only mixing within the same building. It's not having, I mean, of course, you can have a resident. You could build your cottage, you could build your, rebuild your house. No one's saying you can't do that. But you could also make a commercial building, and you could put an apartment above the commercial building. That's what we're saying. Or apartments above the commercial building, up to two and a half stories tall, you know, 35 feet, two and a half stories. So you remember those images I showed all along, showing those, you know, two and a half story buildings, kind of nice, quaint.
Right.
Ground floor. That's, that's kind of what you would get with this policy. You would not get a townhouse strip, or, you know, any tall 50-foot buildings. You'd get something actually scaled down.
But you did say that we could get town homes right now.
Right. But with, with the policy you're writing, you would not. You're taking.
We're changing it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right. I, I agree with it. I agree with that.
I agree with two.
Okay, so Lori, you still want to add that language?
I still want to add under certain conditions. It's, I mean.
Are you, after the word "commercial development," you, where, where do you want to put "under certain conditions"?
Um, I lost your screen.
We can see you.
Okay, apartments under certain conditions, or well, above new commercial development under certain conditions on Maryland 260? Yes.
Yeah, right, 260. I'm sorry. Really, either place would be fine.
Okay, so the proposal is, as amended, is whether to allow apartments under certain conditions above new commercial development on Maryland 260 as part of the redevelopment and revitalization of the commercial gateway mixed use area. Is there any, anyone opposed?
Nope.
No opposition.
Can I just ask one more question? So Chris, could this allow, could this allow the entire 35 feet to be commercial?
Well, it would be up to this design standard you write, and the zoning standard you write. This.
The way it's worded is whether to allow apartments under certain conditions above new commercial development. I would read that as it's commercial development, unless they meet certain conditions and are allowed to put apartments above.
Okay, so this does not restrict somebody from putting commercial on both levels, on, let's just say, both levels, or two and two and a half levels of commercial.
Right, you can have an office space above art gallery.
Okay, okay, all right, all right. That's okay, then. That's fine. That's good.
Okay, so hearing no opposition, we move on to number four. Okay, so hearing no opposition, we move on to number four. 29 left to go.
Oh, God.
We're talking, we're talking about the town center now, uh, 'cause we're gonna go area by area. And in the town center, whether additional new or new multifamily housing type should be allowed. So, uh, Lori, you wanna comment?
I would like to comment on that. I think the, the town, both the town center and the maritime center, um, are in a flood rush zone, they're in an area that, that abuts to water, that abuts to our trailheads, that abuts to our Calum's Field complex. Uh, we are in need of true commercial economic development. It's also an area that, uh, is burdened by water park parking and other parking needs. And so I would like to keep this area clear of new residential use and develop it as, as a commercial and recreational area.
All right, so you're saying no to additional new multifamily housing in the town center. Commissioner Greengold?
I totally agree. I think we're gonna need it for, I would rather see recreational uses down there, maybe that's where the dog park goes, I don't care, but we're gonna need it for parking. We're gonna need, if we're gonna put that pier out there or pier anywhere or anything where we're gonna need more intense recreational uses, we need more parking. So, uh, and we might need more fields. Right now, we've got one field, but we may need more. We've got a lot of kids moving into Chesapeake Beach. I think we hold it open, we don't put any more housing in there, and I agree with Lori on that one. Just leave it as it is, like that.
Commissioner Rutke?
Um, I don't see the need, and, and actually, I see a reason not to have residential in there. I would rather see other things, the other things being, uh, commercial, for example, or recreational space, um, you know, the old folks, uh, playground, the, you know, that kind of thing.
Talking about me?
No, I resemble what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Um, I think it's, I think it's, it's a precious space, and we need to be incredibly thoughtful about how we do all of that and what it looks like and what's the parking gonna look like and everything else. But I don't feel the need for residential. I think we need other things.
Okay, the, this specifically, there are two here. The second one is about any residential. This is about, uh, multifamily housing types to be included. So you're, obviously, your comments apply to that too.
Right.
All right, and Commissioner Brolle?
Um, I, I agree. I don't think, I think it should be limited at, as proposed, that there wouldn't be, it would only be recreational development, not residential in that area.
Okay, and Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, I would agree. Just the term "town center" seems to me to connote commercial, recreational, and not residential, and so that's what, what we should stick to.
Okay, so, uh, the question again is whether additional or new multifamily housing type should be included in the town center. Is there anyone that votes yes? Hearing none, we move on to number five, which is very similar, whether to allow residential units above commercial buildings in the new town center. Similar, similar question to what we had on Route 260. So, uh, can I start at the other end? Commissioner Larson?
Hmm, um, I gotta think about this.
All right, so, uh, we'll start with Commissioner Blackwelder then. We'll keep that order in the future.
I think no is fine here. There's not all residents in, on the commercial properties. I don't see any reason to add them.
Okay. And again, whether to allow residential units above commercial buildings in the new town center. And, uh, Commissioner Blackwelder says no. Commissioner Greengold?
No. I think we need to leave, you know, again, we can get over intense in that area. I don't wanna see another light at Gordon Stinnet, which we would probably have to put in. We have, it's already mushy area right now where we would have to do all kinds of remediation for the water issues. So I think any more weight, any more than just a little tiny, uh, a commercial this or that, but I think any more intensity down there is not appropriate. So absolutely not.
Okay, um, Commissioner Rutke?
I absolutely agree with that thought.
Okay, and Commissioner Brolle?
I agree. I think let's keep it neat, neat and, uh, more concise and don't, uh, over, overdevelop it.
Okay, and Commissioner Larson?
I don't need to think, somebody else has thought better than I have. I agree.
Okay, so that's a no for allowing residential units above commercial buildings in the new town center. Uh, moving on to number six, whether to remove residential land uses as an option for new construction development or redevelopment of commercial structures in the town center. I think we've answered that, haven't we?
Yes, we have.
Anyone not agree? All right, so six is, uh, that's a no. And number seven for the town center, I have whether to conditionally allow for redevelopment of existing residential structures at slightly higher densities in the town center when certain criteria are met and when certain benefits to the town exist. Development rights and responsibilities, uh, and Commissioner Blackwelder added this one and said, see the North Beach Town Ordinance 19-03, adopted Chapter 117, Article 10.
It sounds like Ms. Lori.
So, I can explain this one very quickly. There are residents in the town center, um, there are those, those courtyards at Fishing Creek, which are, um, eventually gonna be in danger of flooding. So, so the question is, do we allow them to redevelop and do we incentivize it, um, to account for the flooding? Or do, you know?
One of the phrases is at slightly higher densities.
Right. Oh, we could get rid of that one because, um, that would be negotiated. It's, you know, the development rights and responsibilities, um, indicates a negotiation between the town and the developer. So, it, it was just an idea, I'm not tied to it. I think that we can, I think we're gonna be good for 10 years, so we can, we can bat it back and forth for 10 years and put it in a comprehensive plan 10 years from now.
So, are you saying you withdraw that one?
Sure.
Anybody else, uh, opposed withdrawing that one? Okay, so, on to the area. Um, talking about the maritime mixed use area. Whether to amend, oh, this is a long one. All right, so, whether to amend the district definition or description for the maritime district to read as follows. Maritime District is intended to promote a variety of commercial and recreational land uses that are water-related and/or benefit from locations near the Chesapeake Bay, Fishing Creek, or the railway trail networks. To protect and highlight right of tide access along Fishing Creek and the Chesapeake Bay through landscape and land and hardscape design to provide for and to allow, under special conditions, various commercial entertainment offerings. To allow existing residential structures to develop in a mixed-use pattern when practical or necessary, and to celebrate and protect the commercial marine activities that have become the town's waterfront heritage. That's a change from before. So Chris, you wanna comment? Tell me, tell us what.
I think what's, and this is not in the current draft, I think what, uh, this is, is a proposal to amend the purpose statement in the zoning district for the maritime zoning district. Um, and the current maritime zoning district, um, is, bear with me just a second.
Can I suggest, uh, since this is, uh, a change being proposed to a definition, that we, uh, asked Chris to take a look at this and see if there, what the impact would be and, and report back to us?
I agree.
Yeah, I do too. I have one question though.
Yes, go ahead.
To protect and highlight the right of tide access along Fishing Creek and the bay. I, I don't understand what tide act, in other words, allow the water to move as it will?
No, that would be, um, that's walkway. You're building something along Fishing Creek or the bay.
Right.
You have tide access, you've gotta put a pathway, you gotta put a walkway, and keep it, that's what right of tide is. You can't, so you can't have your private property and say, only people on my private property have right to this tide. It's, it's a thoroughfare.
Gotcha, 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 okay.
Um, could also, when Chris looks at this, um, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, clearly, but it's pretty, I don't know, by the time I, I read through all of it, I'm not sure what I was agreeing to or, uh, understanding. It's, it's, it's quite the sentence.
It's true, it's, agreed.
It's not that dissimilar from what's in there now, just so y'all know.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, but I, I think, uh, you know, perhaps the legalese, it winds around and by, it's kind of like, um, you know, the explanation on, on, you know, item number 15 on your tax form. It's like, oh, okay.
Right. I'll just tell you guys what my intent was, was to provide for, in the zoning code, the fact that there is the right of tide on all the properties in that area, and then, um, also to designate that area is non-residential, that it's commercial and recreational like the town center.
Well, the, the right of tide is a state law, so I'm not sure that the, uh, individual landowners can, uh, just take it away.
And that's why I say highlight, like, if you're building something, you build the walkway that goes with it, you highlight the right of tide. That was, that was the intent.
So, there's a time for, for drafting that purpose statement, once we get through this comp plan, or at least get to the end of the land use chapter. Um, 'cause that, that statement embodies so many policies, um, it, it, let's make sure the policies itself, themselves are addressed, you know, in the plan itself. And they pretty much are, I think.
Yeah, so, uh, as I think Chris is saying, it's a complex sentence, and, uh, to deal with it on the fly here without studying it may be too deep for us. So let me suggest, Chris, uh, take that under advisement and, uh, and see whether we can or should employ it in the comprehensive plan. Is there any?
Makes sense to me.
Hearing no opposition, we'll move on to the, my number nine, which is, again, we're in the maritime mixed use district. Uh, whether additional or new multifamily housing type should be included in the maritime mixed use district.
I have a question, uh, Larry and Chris. Um, Chris, in, in some section I read, you said that there was a 30,000 square foot potential commercial property use in, in, off of Gordon Stinnet. What am I referring to? Do you know what, like, what I read? I'm trying to figure out. You said it was by the captain's quarters somewhere?
Um, was that chapter five?
I'm trying to remember where I read it, but I was startled because I didn't remember that there was a piece of property back there, and you said that if it had access to bay, to Bayside Road, that it would be a 30,000 square foot piece of commercial property.
Oh, oh, what, what I was referring to is, is in, is, let me just zoom in a little bit on this proposed land use map. Um, okay, has, has the screen stopped for everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, right where, this is, uh, 261, and this is Harbor Road and Mears Avenue. And then the captain's quarters, uh, commercial building is here, you know, where the library been.
Right.
Then, the lot next to it is currently residential. And what I'm suggesting is that this parcel itself, which is next to the commercial parcel, could be upzoned to allow for commercial uses too, as a way of expanding our commercial center where it exists already, without putting it anywhere else.
Gotcha.
And what I said was that, it's, if you look at it reasonably and look at our suburban style of development, probably 30,000 square feet of kind of commercial space could be built on that lot. Um, which, which, if it was built out, you know, at its full potential. So that's, that's basically a proposal to add to the commercial land base in the town.
Right.
If, if you could have a public road or a driveway access from 261, because we wouldn't want residents or commercial customers driving through DeForest Lane, you know?
That requires Maryland roads to get involved, correct?
It would, just like, uh, anything, the applicant would have to obtain a access permit, or just like any lot on a highway, they'd have to get an access permit from the State Highway Administration.
You know, we were also talking about an egress out of the Rollins parking lot area there too, remember Chris?
Yes.
As a secondary act, uh, egress?
Right.
So, you know, that would be a, a little bit of an issue, having both sides trying to come out on 261 at the same time, but we should be addressing that as well, helping the, the Plaza come up with another egress out of that shopping plaza as well. That's a whole nother issue, but that was just something I wanted to throw out there as we're on that conversation.
Right. Well, this discussion's taken us away from what Larry was talking about.
Yeah, okay.
These dark red areas, you know, the maritime zones, where there has been a number of commercial or residential multifamily projects proposed, as you know, three of them, Harbor Vista, uh, South, Harbor Vista North, and Harbor Vista West, out here somewhere. So.
So that, that's, this is addressing those proposals, whether new additional multifamily housing type should be included in the maritime mixed use area. Right?
Uh, essentially, yes. I mean, I, I have broader policy implications than those three projects, but in fact, those projects are at the forefront of our minds right now because they've been submitted to the town.
Right. Okay, so, Commissioner Greengold, anything further to say?
Uh, well, I am not in favor of any residential, um, I'm not, well, okay, let's, let's just go back here. Um, um, my concern in that location is, is the bay. I mean, I am, I think that one thing that we're not really addressing in some of these housing and land use issues is the bay. And that's right next to Fishing Creek. And whenever we put in intensity with housing slash commercial, we're, we're, we're making it chancy that the bay is gonna stay healthy.
stay healthy. And I know that with the development, we have all kinds of policies and issues, where, you know, okay, do this and do that. But at the end of the day, it really doesn't help the bay. At the end of the day, we still have more intensity, and that means a, a chance for the bay to collect more, more filth and become more unhealthy. And that is right there, where they collect a lot of the, the food for abners. I mean, they, they fish it right off of that area. So, I'm really concerned about over-intensifying that location, since it's right next to Fishing Creek. So, I personally am not in favor of any residential building or construction in that area.
Okay. And Commissioner Blackwell, could you state again, are you a yes or a no on whether additional new multifamily housing type should be included in the maritime mixed-use area?
I am a very hard no here, because it shares a light with the new rotten real building. And that's, that's already an over-intensified area. Also, it's a great area where you can put some waterfront dining and some other commercial opportunities that I know all the residents would appreciate. So, I, I don't see the, I don't see any benefit in adding residential in this area.
Okay. Commissioner Rutke?
Not only is there no benefit, there is a detriment to adding residential in that particular area. Not only to preserve Fishing Creek and the bay, but primarily, it's such a special area for the town. What could be done there could be absolutely marvelous. We don't need more housing. It's too intense. I would much rather see benefits to the town than an apartment building.
Okay. And Commissioner Boral?
I agree. I think there should be no further residential development in that area.
All right. And Commissioner Larson?
Amen.
Okay. So, as I read it, unanimous, no additional new multifamily housing type should be included in the maritime mixed-use area. Next item on my list is whether to allow lower-intensity housing, such as single-family townhouses and houseboats, in the maritime mixed-use area. For practical purposes, this would apply to Harbor Road and the limited private land adjacent to Fishing Creek Marina, which still may be developable. So, let's start with Commissioner Blackwell.
I, I just, I don't see the point of adding more residential uses here. I don't, I don't.
Even lower intensity?
Even lower intensity, no. Because it's, it's also, it's in the flood zone, it's adding more residents, it's adding more traffic, and that whole area has commercial in it. There's no reason to add more residents here.
Would you also include houseboats in that area?
I, can we not talk about houseboats right now? Because I really don't know enough about houseboats.
I don't either.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't have a, I don't have any reference point on houseboats and, and what the impacts are.
All right. Let me ask the other commissioners as we go along. Commissioner Greengold? Intensity housing, single-family townhouses and houseboats in the maritime mixed-use area?
I agree that we have a problem with water. The water is, is going to flood that whole area. I do not want to be responsible for somebody trying to, you know, access their house, or even their houseboat. The houseboat situation, you know, you know, I'm from an area where we had a lot of houseboats. There, there's a lot of responsibility with maintaining the sewage issues. And to try and keep a, a clean Fishing Creek or bay, when you've got houseboats, is almost impossible. So, the fact that we would even entertain that, I know it's a quote-unquote law, maybe a lower-income housing idea, but I don't think that is something that we want to entertain for the sake of the bay. We have to, again, think about the quality of the, health of the bay. It's not even about intensity, it's about the flood zone area and the bay. So, I say no way on both of those.
Okay. And Commissioner Rutke?
I, I absolutely agree. No.
No. Okay. Commissioner Boral?
Um, I, I agree, no to the lower-intensity housing, such as the single-family townhouses. But I'm, I'm out on, I don't really know enough about the houseboat and the, and the impact. I have nothing to compare it with. I'm not even sure if there's, you know, other locations. I think, is it Harrington Harbor that they have the houseboat?
Yeah, Harrington Harbor does.
So, I'm not sure the, the impact of that, either negative or positive. So, I, I'd like to learn more about that. But I am definitely a no on the lower-intensity housing, such as the single-family townhouses.
Okay. Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, I'm intrigued about the houseboat idea. I don't know, just, I, I guess there could be complications about it, but it seems like the kind of a romantic, for lack of a better term, way to acquire, you know, some housing. And that would be, seem like an appropriate place for it. But I don't want to, I don't want to make that the focal point of it. So, I would be against it, I guess.
Okay. So, we have, unless somebody stands up to defend this, we have unanimous no on allowing lower-intensity housing, such as single-family townhouses and houseboats in the maritime mixed-use area. All right. Moving on to the next one, whether to remove residential land uses as an option for new construction, development, or redevelopment of commercial structures in the maritime district. So, it seems to me, we've, we've talked a lot about.
Yeah, we've already talked about that several times.
Residences. And unless somebody pipes up, I think that's a no, from what I understand.
Agreed.
That's what I think.
Yep.
The no is happening.
All right. All right. The next one, whether to conditionally allow for redevelopment of existing residential structures at slightly higher densities in the maritime district when certain criteria are met and when certain benefits to the town exist. And we're, here we're talking about the low-income housing over there, I think, Chris. Is that right?
No, I actually think you're, at this point, you're referring to the, I think it's Harbor House. It's a, a two, three-story apartment building on Harbor Road, because that's the only housing project in the dark, deep-red area that's on the map on the screen. So, this would apply to that particular apartment project.
Okay. So, the question is whether to allow that particular housing project to be redeveloped with slightly higher densities?
As a matter of course, if the, if the other issues were resolved, this issue would be resolved too, because you wouldn't be able to increase the density, because this would become a non-conforming use, that apartment building. And it, it could only be replaced in kind. It couldn't be intensified.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so I, that was mine. I can rescind it.
Okay. So, moving on to the residential medium-density district, otherwise known as RMD, whether to amend the district description from the residential medium-density district to read as follows. I'll read it. Or Lori, you want to read your proposal here?
I can read it. The only change in it is to, to single out single-family houses. So, it says, whether to amend the district description for residential medium-density district to read as follows. The residential medium dis, medium-density district, I can't see it.
What did you do over there?
Um, where, I was so organized, but then Larry was organized, so I didn't worry about the organization.
I can read it. The RMD district is intended to promote a pleasant and safe and living environment, to allow single-family houses on small lots with public water and sewer, and to ensure that neighborhood development or redevelopment is compatible and harmonious with existing residential activities, and that it does not impair circulation within neighborhoods or along Maryland Route 261.
How does that differ than the other one? I don't remember the other one.
Here's the other one on the screen, Cindy. It's in blue. Can you see that?
Yeah. I don't really see much difference.
I think the key difference is just the single family, as opposed to not.
Okay.
Um, you know, leaving it open. And I think it's a different phase, but I, I'm just making it more defined, because that area gets really crowded with cars.
I definitely would go along with that.
Okay. Commissioner Rutke?
Yes, I agree.
Commissioner Boral?
Concur.
Okay. Commissioner Larson?
Agree.
Unanimous. All right.
Boy, we were an easy group tonight. What happened? We got Pat on, we got Pat on tonight. Pat, alias Jan.
Moving to the residential village area, whether to amend the district description for the residential village to read as follows. Okay. The RV district, maybe Commissioner Blackwell, if you can tell us what you are trying to change here in this?
You're busy, Lori.
I know. Well, I was, yeah, I was trying to, well, let me just read it. Whether to amend the district description for the residential village to read as follows. The residential village district is intended to provide for pleasant and safe neighborhoods containing both residential and certain non-residential uses that are compatible with residential character, to provide for, under certain conditions, redevelopment opportunities that allow for a variety of housing types and densities that are compatible in use, scale, and impact with existing pattern of buildings, to encourage the preservation of the historic characteristics of cottage neighborhoods where they remain, and to facilitate walkability and placemaking through targeted programs and, and initiatives. Um, let's just not consider this right now, because we already talked about this with the Route 260.
All right. So, you're withdrawing it. Okay.
I'll withdraw that right now.
All right.
What is the difference between yours and the old one, Lori? I'm trying to, I'm trying to see what you put in yours that is different.
It's, it's conditional. And I actually left something in that I didn't intend to. What I had started with this as, as saying, it could be a mix of residential or commercial was what I was getting at. But we've already had that conversation, and everybody seemed to appreciate the mixed-use idea, as long as there was commercial under. I, I think we've discussed this. Maybe we can refine the residential village area.
You know, I, I just, I just wonder, Lori, if you were thinking also about the discussion we had regarding the duplexes, triplexes, et cetera, being allowed in the RV residential village area. Were you concerned about that when you wrote this up? Was that part of the thing you were thinking? You wanted to avoid having, to avoid intensity?
Yes. I would like to avoid having that permitted outright, for sure. Um, yeah, I, I.
Yeah, that's what I think you were trying to get at in here. It doesn't say it in there, but I think that's what you were.
It's not worded right.
It's not. Well, you needed to, you talked about the cottage neigh, you talked about the historic characteristics of cottage neighborhoods. But I think your intent was to try and avoid the, the, you know, the multiple use, oh, shoot. Am I right, Lori? Am I?
You are right. You are. And I think what I meant to write was to allow residential over-commercial, that is compatible in use and scale and impact, not a variety of housing types. To me, different. I'm sorry, guys. I, I botched this one. I, I think that if we cross out, that allow for a variety of housing types and densities that are compatible in use, scale, impact with existing pattern of buildings, if we cross out that whole sentence, then we could vote on this.
Lori?
But it doesn't.
So, you want the variety of housing types, then? You want that variety of housing types? I thought you didn't want it.
No, that's what I'm saying. I didn't want it. And somehow, I must have just typed it in here.
Well, why don't you revise it the way you think? We have to be able to tell Chris what we want. And, and the best way is to write it out, in my view. And then he knows.
Do you just want to say disallow for a variety of housing types? Maybe that's what you want to say, disallow.
Can I ask a question before? Lori, could you, I, I don't know that I know what placemaking is, where it says, and to facilitate walkability and placemaking. Can you just comment on that for me?
Um, yeah. So, placemaking is just a term that, I mean, Chris knows, planners use. It's, it's something that they say you should strive for, that every place has a sense of place that's unique to itself. And you can do that through streetscape, hardscape, landscape, design standards. So, it's really just a, a general term to, you know, in keeping with the idea of developing design guidelines, that make kind of each section of our town unique to itself in each section, is, is the idea. It's very, you know, broad conceptual type of thing, when you talk about placemaking.
Okay.
Does that answer the?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you, if you wanted to include opportunities that disallow for a variety of housing types, I could go along with that. Because right now, you have it in there that they could probably put in, you know, you know, a stack of RVs and let people live in that. I mean, I just, I, I just think when you say a variety of housing types, that kind of opens it up to allowing that whole area to become whatever, you know, a developer wants to do with it. So, I'd be a little concerned about that.
Yes. Chairman Brown, could you cross out redevelopment opportunities that allow for a variety of housing types and densities? That, that whole, all the way to the semicolon?
Including that are compatible in use?
Um, and to the, to the word buildings, and then cross out to the word buildings. From, to provide, under certain conditions, redevelopment opportunities that allow for a variety of housing types and densities that are compatible in use, scale, and impact with the existing pattern of buildings. All that crossed out. And so, uncrossed out, to encourage the preservation.
Okay. Can you, just, in, in a phrase, can you describe what you're trying to do here? And then we can all agree or disagree on whether we want to do that.
Okay. In a phrase, I'm continuing to add both residential and non-residential uses in the residential village districts. And I am suggesting that the preservation of certain districts, to, to encourage the preservation and historic characteristics of the cottage neighborhoods would be what Cindy got at, at a previous meeting with incentives for historic housing and that kind of thing.
Okay. Chris, you understand that kind of thing?
I do, and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
That's what your job is, Chris.
I don't recommend it. I advise you strongly against it, but I think.
Okay. Well, give us what, what the problem is here, because we, we're. Okay, well, give us, uh, what, what the problem is here, because we, we're up to our ankles now on this, this, we're going to withdraw it, but-
Um, this is the only zone in the, the town right now that allows essentially a, a duplex or, um, uh, even a triplex. A lot of the houses that are built in this zone are large enough to accommodate those types of multiple housing or housing units without any change in character to the neighborhood, uh, and it's an important part of making, uh, a town livable for people of all incomes and age groups. Uh, if you eliminate this possibility, you do clearly say that you're not interested in allowing for people to make the opportunity available for a variety of housing types. Uh, so, it's counter to state policy, uh, and it just takes us in a different direction, uh, in a really fundamental way about housing that the town has always encouraged and sponsored. So, that's why. I, I think it's counterproductive to the town's long-term efforts, like, encourage kind of a mix of housing for a variety of people.
Where, what areas are we talking about?
Um, you're talking about this area here, Jan, it's, uh, can you see the map?
Yep.
So, so it's this shaded area all through here, and, and up here on Cox Road as well.
Oh, is it up on Cox Road?
But the most, and the most relevant thing is probably within this area, because this is where the cottage pattern has been established, right?
Right, right, right.
And as I, as I mentioned before, the, the code has always allowed that, there's some difficulties with the way the wording in the code is that it prevented some people from making use of the property to provide another apartment, uh, in a building or something like that, but, um, but there, there's always been a permitted use within this residential zone, so.
Okay, so, let me pose the question, do we want to change it, or do we want to, do we want to change it? Commissioner Blackwelder.
I really don't want them, the duplex, triplex, quadplex, townhomes, I think we already discussed, we don't want townhomes in that area, because we're, we're going for the, the commercial with residential above mixed-use type scenario rather than, um-
Okay, so you're, you're a yes for changing it. Commissioner Greengold.
Um, Chris, is there any way that we can control what type of, of, uh, of housing we would be seeing over there? In other words, a person has a single-family house, are they going to end up with like a, a, a three or four townhomes right next to them with, uh, no park or no, no little totlot for the kids to play in? I mean, is, is it possible that we could ruin the, the life of these people in that community?
Do you think that these would be, uh, ruinous of community character, these types of buildings, which show up all types of places like Charleston and Savannah and Annapolis? I just don't know why you would write a law and a policy that would prevent someone from building this, uh, quality housing, um, just-
I agree.
I just don't see it, I, particularly given the fact that seniors are aging without the savings necessary to build, you know, survive a long time. Multiple, multiple ways of housing seniors are being developed now, and in many ways, we're going back to the place where we convert large houses into senior housing, because that's all we have, and we, uh, we can't send seniors out, always outside of our community to live, we want them to live on the streets where they grew up, or, you know, where their kids are. So, this just provides an opportunity, it's not saying it's going to happen, it just allows flexibility so the market can accommodate these types of issues. And to your point, yes, I think there should be design standards adopted, so you don't have kind of egregious examples of, of this types of housing that looks ridiculous. I mean, this is kind of the quality of housing that you want. Um, I mean, maybe this is not totally appropriate for the neighborhood, maybe it is, but, uh, you, you don't want to see that sort of pancake house, or a garish blue structure with no modification of the mass, you know, with porches or walkways, but, you know, if you're going to allow for commercial in residential, why wouldn't you allow for two residential units side by side? Certainly, the impact to the neighborhood would be much less with two, uh, you know, families or individuals living there rather than a business and a family.
And that would, that would require combining lots, because the lots are so small over there, correct?
Uh, no, actually, the many of lots are, Larry, but, um, many of them are really quite large, actually, so, people have combined them over the years, so it's a real mix. Uh, there are quite a few really tiny ones that, where this would not take place, you simply couldn't do it.
So, how would you handle the impact on the sewage and all that? If we had, let's just say, everybody did this, and they decided to, uh, split their lots into two, would we have enough capacity to handle, if everybody did this, let's just say?
Yeah.
Worst-case scenario.
Yeah, we have so much excess capacity-
Right.
-in the wastewater treatment plant, in the water, and in schools. I know the commissioner's been resistant to that, even with respect to schools, but with the expansion of Beach Elementary and the, I, this, this places no burden, in fact, it exists today, so when we, when the engineers did a design, they designed the wastewater treatment plant thinking long-term, uh, all this land would be developed. You, through the actions so far, have substantially reduced the possibility for, uh, development in the town, uh, so allowing for gradual infill like this, or sporadic infill, I guess, is really, has no, it's a negligible impact on essential facilities.
No, Chris, this is only on Harbor Road? You said there's, this is only one area within the, within the town, and that's Harbor Road?
No, this is the, the, the area that is, Kathleen, it's, it's, uh, from essentially Maryland 260, which is the line I'm drawing here-
Uh-huh.
-just south of it, you know, um, to the, where the town cen-, center in Callum's Field is, and then north of it, all the way up to Chesapeake Beach, or up North Beach.
Oh, like up by the firehouse and by Seagate?
Well, that's where, that's where I'm proposing now, I mean, currently, the current zoning map zones all of this, Cox Road as something different too, it's, it's, it applies the same standards to Cox Road, and I could pull up the zoning map, I'll show you.
And so, I think the problem is that that area is just too big to have that type of housing everywhere, so maybe we could pick one area, like a little, by Cox, where we would allow it.
Um, I've, I'd like to make a comment, I don't know what's going on with my computer, but it looks like it's going to die on me. Um, if, if you go down to North Beach, and I think it's on Second Street, pretty sure it is, it's a beautiful sort of antebellum, although modern, house with two apartments in it. It's lovely, I'd love to live next to it.
Is this by Saint Anthony's?
Past Saint Anthony's, Second Street, oh, no, excuse me, um, Fourth Street.
Okay.
What I'm trying to say is, I would be perfectly fine with that kind of housing and density, I think there need to be places for people to live that are somewhat less expensive, and putting a duplex on a lot would allow that to happen, and I think that's important. Uh, I also think that, that, uh, it would not change the character of the neighborhood if it was being built, uh, you know, in the way that, uh, Chris is describing.
I think, uh-
All right, so let's, let's go commissioner by commissioner and, and resolve this. As I understand it, Commissioner Blackwelder is for changing it to restrict, uh, multi-family housing over there. Um, Commissioner Greengold, have you stated your position?
I think I'm going to go with retaining the old, um, the old code. I think we do need, uh, some variety, and maybe this is a location that, uh, understands that they are, uh, you know, are able to have it in that location, so I'm going to go ahead and stick with the old, the old code on this one.
Okay, and Commissioner Rutke.
Uh, I want to stay with the old code, I think there are multiple reasons for it.
Okay, and Commissioner Brolle.
Uh, I think diversity is important, and I am going to support the old code.
And Commissioner Larson.
Uh, keep it.
Say again.
Uh, keep it the way it is, yeah.
Okay, so it's four, four to one, uh, we'll keep the old definition. Um, it's nine o'clock, uh, I don't know how many of you have to go to work tomorrow, if you want to adjourn and continue on the 28th, I can do that, or if you want to continue, I'm happy to do that, so.
How many more do we have, Larry? How many more do we have?
We are, we just finished number 14 of 33.
Oh, my God.
We've got pages. My computer's about to die, so I'm going to have to exit no matter what, so.
Okay, let's just continue on the next meeting, then, let's just, uh, you know, since Jan, since Pat is ready to go.
No, 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 it's nothing, I, we can't possibly get through the other items that, that we need to cover, and I think we all need to be fresh and thoughtful when we go through the last of them, so.
All right, so we're starting, I'll distribute this list that's numbered, uh, to everybody, but we're starting with, uh, the Residential Village area bordered by 260 and Callum's Field, townhouses on 26th Street and the Town Hall, and then we follow that with, uh, Residential Village bordered by 260, west of 261 and North Beach Line, and then the Residential Village along Cox Road, and then some proposals for neighborhood commercial zones. So, uh, I have a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
I'll second.
And we will, uh, all in favor or all opposed? No one's opposed, so we will adjourn until the 28th at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you, good night all.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Goodbye, everyone. Good night, Chairman Brown.
Thank you.